And we're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for October the 8th, 2025. We're here in city council chambers, Hamilton, Ohio. We have one public hearing this evening, and that involves the rezoning of the Kettering Fort Hamilton property to business plan development. Little call, please. Moore?
Present.
Pullman?
Present.
Fear?
Vaughn?
Present.
Ryan?
Present.
Nab?
Present.
Lauer?
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Your motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to city council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Susan Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're going to start off with offering a prayer. The Councilmember Tim Nab, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Let us pray. As our sacred, as our great city of Hamilton continues to grow, we are gathered here this evening to listen and learn from each other in the work of our city. Lord, please help guide us in all our decisions for the betterment of our city. We ask you to continue to bless us with continued growth and keep safe our first responders and those dedicated to our public safety and well-being. We are most grateful for their dedicated work. Lord, watch over our military as the men and women of our armed forces work to keep our nation free and recognized throughout the world as peacekeepers. Please assist us in our work to help those in need throughout our country, our city, state, and country, as many seek assistance for necessities we can provide. We pray these petitions in your holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next part of the agenda is special presentations, and we do have several of them this evening. And that's because a lot of special things are going on in this city. First one is a Veterans of Foreign Wars oath. Tim Nab, Chris Haynes. And before they go into that, I want to say just a few words. Come on up here. November has been designated Veterans Month in the city of Hamilton. A military veteran, Tim Nab, has been teaming up with some of the veterans who work for the city, military veterans who work for the city, including Chris Haynes, who is joining Tim Nab up here. And Tim and Chris have worked on many projects that benefit our veterans in the city, including the Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame, which has its upcoming event November the 9th, 2025, as well as, I know you've seen them all, it's the Hometown Heroes banners that do line our streets. So we've got a bunch of great people in the city who get together, they're veterans, and are making our city a better place. So you want to tell us why we're here, Chris?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a unique ceremony, usually not done at a city council. This is usually done inside the walls of a VFW post or Legion post or AMVets post, but we give a new member an obligation to the organization. You know, 54 years ago, Tim came home from Vietnam. A lot of people didn't know that up until a few years ago, that he was even a veteran. You know, we started on this Hometown Heroes banner project three years ago. We started on a Hall of Fame project about seven years ago, and that's when I found out that Tim was a veteran. So he's a slow learner, took him 54 years, but we finally got him to join the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which is the premier organization for combat veterans. We are the oldest and largest combat veterans organization in the world. Just a few weeks ago, we had a ceremony in Columbus, Ohio, where the Veterans of Foreign Wars was founded, September 29th of 1899. So we've been around about 126 years. So and each member that joins on the eligibility of being a combat veteran deployed overseas, when they join a post, any of our numerous 6,000, some odd posts around the world, they take a member's obligation. And Tim has yet to do that because he just joined about seven weeks ago. So tonight, we're going to do the member's obligation for Tim and present him his Cross of Malta insignia as a member. So Tim, are you ready?
I'm ready.
If you'll raise your right hand, touch the flag of our nation with your left, and repeat after me. In the presence of Almighty God.
In the presence of Almighty God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Tim Nab.
Do on my own free will and accord.
Do on my own free will and accord.
solemnly promise and declare.
solemnly promise and declare.
That I will bear true allegiance.
That I will bear true allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States of America.
To the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will always be loyal thereto.
And I will always be loyal thereto.
I do further solemnly promise.
I do further solemnly promise.
And declare.
And declare.
That I will comply with congressional charter.
That I will comply with congressional charter.
Bylaws and ritual of this order.
Bylaws and ritual of this order.
And will always be loyal thereto.
And will always be loyal thereto.
I will never wrong or defraud this organization.
I will never wrong or defraud this organization.
Nor a member thereof.
Nor a member thereof.
Nor permit any wrong to be done.
Nor permit any wrong to be done.
To either.
To either.
If in my power to prevent it.
If in my power to prevent it.
I will never propose for membership.
I will never propose for membership.
Any person not eligible.
Any person not eligible.
Nor one who I know to be unworthy.
Nor one who I know to be unworthy.
I will never make it known to anyone.
I will never make it known to anyone.
Not authorized to receive it.
Not authorized to receive it.
Any of the work of this order.
Any of the work of this order.
To my affiliation.
To my affiliation.
With the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States.
With the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States.
Cease in any way.
Cease in any way.
I will consider this pledge.
I will consider this pledge.
As binding outside of the order.
As binding outside of the order.
As though I had remained a member of saying.
As though I have remained a member of saying.
All this I promise and pledge.
All this I promise and pledge.
Upon my honors a true comrade.
Upon my honor as a true comrade.
And a member of our great republic.
And a member of our great republic.
Put your hands down. So the real foreign service declaration is the Cross of Malta. It's an official insignia of our beloved order and recognized and protected by the United States government as such. The Cross of Malta is a time-honored emblem whose foundation comes down to us from the days of the Crusades a thousand years ago. History tells no more fascinating tale than that of the knights of the Crusades who were inspired purely by unselfish motives to jive the barbarian from the land they had defied. The Cross of Malta was one of their emblems, and while they failed after, and while they failed after generations of warfare, the feat was finally accomplished by our comrades of the world wars. Such is, such is the origin of the beautiful emblem selected by the founders of our organization, symbolic of justice and resitute that has sent us crusaders from modern times on foreign shores. So it's my honor to present you with the Cross of Malta of our organization, and please wear it proudly.
Thank you, Chris.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I will share with you, as, as my friend Chris Haynes learned, many of us came home from Vietnam and went on about our lives. I was one of those guys. I always felt that the, the honor of being a veteran was the other guys that served. I told Chris this evening, I left for Vietnam on October the 13th, so five days from now. So this presentation tonight, my joining the VFW finally after Chris said 54 years, I came home in December of 1971. I was in Nam for just over 14 months as a combat veteran. I'm very, very proud of my service to our country. I'm very proud of our brethren, of our brothers and sisters who serve our country and go on gallantly about their jobs. All of those that we lost, all of those that came back mean, all of those that suffered through mental illness, the challenges of being a veteran and things. So it's with just a great amount of pride that we're able to do this, especially now coming into the month of November, as, as the mayor shared with you, our Veterans Hall of Fame, our 634 banners, it's off the charts. I get calls every week from people and say to me, Tim, how do I apply for a banner? So we'll have even more displayed and installed again next year. Our banners come down after Veterans Day, after November the 9th this year, the banners will start to come down. We clean them, dry them, store them in bins during winter time, and then they're reinstalled again next year. So again, thank you for this honor, Council. Thanks for helping Chris. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
While Chris Haynes walks away, I just want to mention that Chris Haynes is a city employee. He is a national officer of the VFW, is that correct, Chris?
Yes, sir.
And he's a former commander of the Ohio VFW. And he's taken Hamilton with him wherever he goes. He takes his life experience as a veteran wherever he goes, a great representative of the city of Hamilton. He's connecting veterans to benefits. So thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Another example of, of like service over self. Okay. Next, we have the Hispanic Heritage Celebration recap.
Buenos noches y gracias. We're veneer. And that's, and I'm not as good as Daniel nor Sol, but that is good evening and thank you for coming. So thank you, city manager, city mayor, and city council. September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. So tonight, Sol and I will present awards to two gentlemen. One is a city of Hamilton employee, and one is a business owner here in the city of Hamilton. I will introduce them, and Sol will answer the questions that we have asked of them in Spanish. So our first gentleman that we would like to call up is Victor Carillo. So Victor is the owner and manager of, and I'm going to let Sol say this, I practiced it all day, the restaurant.
Beckettia and the Huatul Mexican Grill.
Yes. And where are you located again?
752 North West Washington Boulevard. We're right behind La Rosa's and Midas Tider.
Yes, probably most of us have stepped by, stopped by there once or twice. So Mr. Victor and his family moved to this country when he was just a child. In 2004, his parents started a small mom and pop convenience store in Fairfield, Ohio. Victor was 14 at the time and was responsible for helping them get their business established. Those experiences gave him the unique skill set to help him when he opened his own food truck in 2016, which has now grown into the restaurant that he owns and manages today here in the west side of Hamilton. We asked Victor a few questions. The first question is, what are some of the challenges you have faced and overcome as a person of Hispanic Latino descent?
So like Becca said, I'm going to be reading it in Spanish, but I decided to mix it up a bit, so we're going to do Spanish. So this is what Victor answered. My biggest challenge has been mindset, believing in what's possible as a Hispanic in this country. Al crecer, había poca orientación para nuestra comunidad sobre los negocios, lo que nos dejaba en desventaja. Tuve que impulsarme a mí mismo to seek answers and ask questions and learn through trial and error, especialmente cuando creí, I'm sorry, crecí mi negocio, from a food truck to a work and mortar restaurant. Lo más difícil fue tomar acción y aceptar el rechazo como parte del proceso. Con recursos limitados, muchos de nosotros empezamos solo con determinación, learning as we go. Para mí, todo se relucó a mindset and resilience.
Second question, why do you think it's important to celebrate Hispanic Latino Heritage Month?
This month is important because it inspires our community by sharing the success that is possible by our Hispanic community, even for those who have similar challenges. También creía, creo conciencia entre otras culturas sobre the positive impact that Hispanics make in the Hamilton community. A las escuelas, los trabajos, y las comunidades. Muy seguido nuestras contradicciones pasan desapercibidas y reconocimiento that we need to highlight the value we bring.
Lastly, what does this month mean to you personally?
For me, this month means recognition and gratitude. Para todos los esfuerzos de nuestra comunidad hispana, la gente que se arriesga aprende algo nuevo, fall intentando, pero sigue adelante. Este reconocimiento importa tanto si alguien, someone who has graduated high school, college, or has started a business. Si siente como un round of applause para nosotros, para nuestros esfuerzos. Un reconocimiento que a veces no recibimos ni en el trabajo, ni en la comunidad, ni en la casa. Muchos de nosotros venimos de muy poco, y el éxito suele esperarse simplemente because we came to this country of opportunity. Admito que a veces doy por asentado unos meses o eventos nacionales porque estoy tan enfocado en running my business and seeking other opportunities to continue to grow. Pero siempre me acuerdo porque estoy orgulloso de ser quien soy.
You've got some family out there, don't you?
Uh, my daughter and my wife.
Yeah, I'm not there, but we're either. Can I arrive with anything?
Yes, of course. We're ready.
Before I present this to you, I think we need to have, hear from some of your words now, and you've got a great restaurant, too.
Thank you, I appreciate the support.
All right, you want to introduce your family here?
This is my daughter Jaslyn and my wife Juliana, who has been by my side since day one. So it's definitely been a journey. It's something that kind of started as a side project and evolved over time, and now it's kind of like a train that has gained momentum, and it's kind of unstoppable, per se, until the railroad fears off, but hopefully that won't happen.
Great way to describe it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the support of everybody, and it's definitely been very honoring that the city has supported us throughout, throughout so many years. We actually just completed nine years since August 8th, so it's almost a decade now here in Hamilton. And we, you know, we love Hamilton so much that we actually bought our first property in 2020, and now our second one, and we don't plan on going anywhere. So thank you all for your opportunity, for your support.
Thank you. We have a certificate of recognition, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, certificate of recognition awarded to Victor Correio in recognition of being selected for the 2025 Hispanic Latino Heritage. In honor of your continued service to the city of Hamilton and community, we thank you. That is yours. I'm going to try a little bit of Spanish right now, okay?
Yeah. Okay.
If I mess up, you can just tell me. Say trata de la comunidad.
Muy bien.
It's all about community, is what I said. Glad you're okay. You're doing great. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Our second gentleman that we would like to recognize tonight is one of our very own, Kevin Emphil. He, Kevin was hired at the city of Hamilton in May of 2017. Kevin works in the police department as a police civilian employee. We asked Kevin a few questions. Why do you think it's important to celebrate Hispanic Latino Heritage Month?
Creo que es importante celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana latina because it gives us the opportunity to honor the contributions, tradition, and history of our Hispanic community. Una comunidad que ha tenido un impacto poderoso en este país. Es importante reconocer where our family comes from, the values they pass down, y nuestra cultura influye nuestras vidas diarias. Celebrar este mes no nos ayuda to connect, share stories, and ensure future generations feel proud of who we are.
What special point of view has your Hispanic Latino heritage given you?
My heritage has taught me to value family, resilience, and community. Me he, me ha enseñado la importancia de trabajo duro, de apoyar a otros, y de sentirse orgulloso de nuestras raíces. También me ha demostrado cómo cultura and tradition strengthens identity y crea un sentido de perseverance. Esta perseverencia siempre nos recuerda respetar la diversidad and appreciate that many, that many ways people contribute to society.
And lastly, what does this month mean to you personally?
For me, Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to reflect and appreciate. Me permite aprender sobre, más sobre las historias, las tradiciones, y las contribuciones de nuestra comunidad, mientras honro los valores que mi familia me ha pasado. Este mes me recuerda lo importante of celebrating where we come from y recordar la influencia positiva de nuestra cultura en quién somos hoy. Es un tiempo de pride and connection and also opportunity to share our heritage with everyone else.
I'd like to say a few words about your employee chief, Chenoweth.
So a couple of things you should know about Kevin. He started with us about nine years ago, and he's been a blessing to the organization. The two things that I'd like to point out, and I don't know if you'd say this is a good thing or a bad thing, Kevin, but he has no idea how to say the word no. It never comes out of his mouth, regardless of what I ask him to do, where I need, where I need help with, he's the guy that before you get three words out of your mouth, he's got it, no problem. I have a feeling I know where that comes from. His mom and dad are here tonight, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize their military service, so a round of applause for that. Thank you both so much. The second thing I wanted to share with you about Kevin is, he's been on a health journey now for quite some time, and he's made some significant progress, even to the point where he's now considering a change of careers, and that change of careers would be switching over to a police officer position. So he's now in the police officer process, and we wish him the best, and we look forward to where this is going to go. Kevin, we thank you so much.
Thank you for joining the city team, and it sounds like you're definitely going places within the police department. That is very, very impressive. It is great to see your, your parents here. I'm sure that they support you in your journey and, and always have. I'm not going to say any Spanish right now. City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, certificate of recognition awarded to Kevin Emphil in recognition of being selected for the 2025 Hispanic Latino Heritage. In honor of your continued service for the city of Hamilton and community, we thank you, some of myself as mayor, and also signed by our city manager, Craig Bukai. Thank you so much. A round of applause.
Okay, so that ends our presentation tonight, and we would like to thank you all for coming, and have a great evening.
Esa ha sido nuestra presentación, muchas gracias a todos, espero que lo hayan disfrutado y que tengan muy buenas noches.
Next, we have spooky nook update by Sam Beiler.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Well, I thought a, a quick update would be good, and, you know, I, I think the impression I've always had in Hamilton is, is one of community, and, you know, I've said it here, I've said it many places. I don't think I've ever come across a municipality that's been as good to work with, but more importantly, I think the idea of community and recognizing people in the community and being connected to that is really what drives the health of the city and, and a lot of the energy that's, that's been coming along. It was last month, September, nine years ago, that I first came to Hamilton, Ohio, and there has been a lot of change in this city since then. I thought it was always important to recognize that Joshua Smith and the city council, most of you who were a part of this many years ago, had great momentum by the time we got here. And you already saw it on High Street, Main Street, and some other areas where the shops were opening, the facade improvements were happening, and, and it was a good start. And so we've been just really happy to be a part of it, and this year's turning out pretty well for us. If you go by now, you're going to see an empty parking lot far, far more often than I prefer. But through August, we had a very good year, really solid performance in terms of the number of events, the number of attendees that are coming, and then a couple of interesting points I'll make. And at some point, I could spend an hour really going through the details, but tonight's not that night, we'll keep it pretty simple. There's some pictures of B Street, and, you know, it's a little hard to remember sometimes what B Street looked like before, and, and then the after. Really, a lot of glass, and, you know, my son pointed out that I didn't remember all the windows were bricked up. And, you know, I, I don't know when they did that, probably whenever electricity became the norm and they had people working 24/7, it was better if you didn't know if it was daytime or nighttime outside. But nevertheless, there's a lot more glass around the building now. That was the inside of the conference center at the main entrance. You recognize some of the yellow tracks there on the bottom left corner, that's still a beam that's, doesn't look yellow in these pictures, it might not be in here, but it's still up above. These were a couple of events that have happened at the conference center. We're really excited about the business volume and how it's picking up in the conference center. There are many local, you know, there are a couple of really large local companies whose portfolio includes more Fortune 100 companies maybe than we have in the whole state of Pennsylvania. So it's a fantastic opportunity. We've been proud to host events for P&amp;G and GE and GE Aviation's coming early next year. These are some, you know, pretty large events, six, 700 people, 2,000 room nights. Those are the kinds of impacts that we're excited to bring to Hamilton. It's good for us, it's good for the city. Last year through the end of September, we had 627,000 attendees. This year was 978, so nearly 350,000 more people in the first nine months of the year. We'll continue to gather that data. It slows down on the sports side at the end of August, but I would point out, back in Pennsylvania, they've had, you know, they might have two, we might have two or three weekends that are quiet, and we have 15 or 20 out here. So it'll take another two years or so to really fill those in. Wrestling is a great opportunity, we're just starting to break into that market out here, and a couple of other things like that, I think will continue to drive our weekend business during tournament season, weekday business in the conference center. This is interesting, never mind all the small stuff on the left side, but this was July 10th of this year. Each state that has a color in it was represented in the building, so there were 47 states, and Alberta were in Hamilton that weekend. I think that was maybe a 500-team event, it was four days, came Friday, ended Monday. That was actually a surprise for me. When we put this map together, I thought we'd have, you know, maybe 25 states or 27, a lot more regionally located. Imagine my surprise when we looked at July 18th and we had all 50 states, including Alaska and British Columbia represented, in Hamilton for a four-day weekend. And, you know, I, I think the key is just that, you know, constant rotation of people coming through. Why is that good for the city? You will find in time, people say, remember Hamilton? Why don't, I'd like to retire there. We get it in Lancaster all the time, not just from the nook, it's because we've had tourism for 30 or 40 years or so, really growing nicely. And, but it, it has an impact, and, and we've, we've been really pretty excited about where people are coming from, how many different areas they're coming from. Couple of the projects that are underway now is we're adding a laundry, we've, we've had that service outside. We've we've had that service outside. These aren't very exciting things really for most of you, but we continue to work on the dining room. We have the conference area dining room. There is a separate dining room that's being built. It'll have two additional bars in there. What we call the tip of the ship, that's all the way at the north end, there's two more meeting rooms that, well, they've been sold, so we have to have them finished by the first of November. And that's well underway. The hardwood floors were sanded, so that's why we were behind in some of those. It was a pretty dusty mess, but they're really coming in. We have more food coming in than we have walk-in coolers to store them in. So we're adding some coolers on the docks and again, not not really exciting stuff, but from an operating perspective, it really does smooth things out. The biggest change, and you may have seen it already, around the administrative administration building, we call it the White House, the excavating began this week, they're taking out all the old curbs. They'll be replacing those curbs, the fencing, the fencing that was there will be removed and fencing will be added to match the rest of the property. Concrete pads where trucks turn, you know, messes up asphalt, so we're we're taking care of that. And then asphalt paving and striping. We expect that all to be finished by November 15th. In addition to the cleanup of the landscape around there, that'll bring a really solid improvement to the to the front of the property coming off of B Street or Black Street Bridge. The windows is what we'll start working on soon. We're working on a laser machine that'll strip the old paint and all that kind of stuff, but we'll start with the outside improvements on that as soon as we get through the historic tax credit process or the historic review. I should go back and you'll you'll see the after pictures of B Street, you know, it's with great sadness that the awnings are not there, but we're down to about, I think, 22 months before until we can put them back up. So, you know, time is actually moving along a lot faster than than you would think. So that's it for tonight. If you have any questions, I'll I'll do my, oh, I do have one more thing. We're digging into a lot of data, but it appears from 22 to 25, so before we opened until after we opened, the ADR, the average daily rate of hotels in Butler County has increased 41%. So it's, we're, you know, these are, if you're a hotel owner, it's good. If you want to rent a room, it's not, you know, so good. So we hope we're not renting local rooms, but the occupancy is up, the ADR is up, and so the impacts that that we believed we would have, you know, are happening. And we're, you know, we've got a lot of cleanup behind us, some of the, you know, missed time, the two years that we were really delayed is almost fully behind us. And so we're excited about where we are, but we're really excited about the coming year and the rest of this season, so.
Congratulations and thank you. And that's a big jump from 24 to 25. I mean, that's an amazing amount of people.
It's a lot of people.
Wow, it's great.
They're better behaved in the Midwest than they are in the East Coast, so we're happy to be here.
Midwest nice. There you go. Thank you again, Sam.
You're welcome.
Next, Butler County Courthouse restoration update by John Fabello.
Good evening. Good evening. Michael had asked, Councilman Michael had asked that I give a presentation and an update and it's kind of interesting. I I've worked with many of you originally to move the courthouse into this building when we built this in the early 90s and has stayed with Commissioner, Council fear on the courthouse restoration committee and it's great to see it coming back to life. So for the last three years, we've been working with the county on getting the courthouse stabilized on the outside. So you'd asked to give a little update, so I'm gonna give you an update of three phases. Two of them have happened already and I'll try to go fast, but tells you a little bit about the team. There's Restoration Nathan Lee, THP Structural, ourselves and the county have been working on the courthouse for the last three years. It started out by trying to stabilize the exterior. So there were three phases. The first phase involved the gutters, the anything that was bringing water into the building, so the slate roof, the gutters, some of the upper flat areas. And Phase Two was all the stonework and Phase Three was the stairs, the clock tower and the windows. We're currently in Phase Three, so I'm gonna show you some pictures of what's happened already. So this is the lower roofs. So all the slate was taken off, taken back to the wood and the sleepers rebuilt with original slate, so historically correct. You can see the gutters, all the original copper gutters, the inside was removed and new copper was put in place, so it's ready for another 100 years. In this phase, again, all the trim and all the lead, there's all that metalwork up there that isn't stone on the roof, it's metal and it all got recoded, stripped, finish put on it and then recoded with a finish for another 20 years. The first phase was the roof, then the second phase was actually the stone and the stone was the phase that was in the worst condition. It's sandstone from Ohio, so it's soft. So there was a lot of studies done. You can see some areas where the stone has a special texture, so we didn't want it to look like patches. So wherever there was stonework, about an inch of stone was cut and replaced with either stone or with a mix of stone-like. You can see some, I'll skip. This was a study of the colors. One of the things that they wanted to make sure that we didn't change the color of the courthouse and we did a a study of all the colors that it had, created concrete, stone templates and then used that as a mixed patch. Textures were aligned. If you get up close to the courthouse, you can see all the stone was hand-cut originally, so we retooled it to look like the original stone, trying to historically preserve it. And this shows you some of the befores and some of the asters. On the left, you can see some of the tooling that was done. On the center, the column shows where it was all retooled to match existing. Again, some patches, those are, three of those are new and four of them are existing, so very close replication of the existing stonework. And all the the mortar was cut and re-mortared, so basically the outside of this building, all the mortar is new and that that process took almost a year and a half. The third phase that we're currently in is the stairs, the upper roofs and the clock tower. As a lot of you know, the clock tower is not the original. There's been three clock towers on the courthouse. The first one burned, the second one was not desirable and they replaced it with the one that we have today. So this phase took all the stairs and as you can see, the original center picture on the top, the stairs were in pretty bad shape. The county had had to close them over the years. So all four sides were rebuilt, concrete, structural, waterproof, because there was water getting in through the stairs that was affecting the lower level. So that all was resolved in the Phase One. And then it also, this shows you some construction sites where they poured, fixed the structure and then on the top, there's actually some stone and some, the second tier of stairs is actually steel held with pan, so all of that will restored and recoded and rustproof put up there so that again, we can prevent the water to come in. Okay. So then on the upper, the clock tower, the new clock tower, the the final one is terracotta. It is not stone. Terracotta over the years, the finish, it's a glazed product like bathroom tiles, that glazing gets water and cracks. So the the second phase of the current one was to take out all the terracotta and if you go by, you'll see where there's holes in that upper, they're pulling out the terracotta, rebuilding them and then replacing them and then re-glazing the entire. So one of the nice things is because the tower was done later, it never matched. If you remember, it was a different color. It was a colder color. So it is being re-glazed now with a color that'll match the sandstone and make it look like it's all one piece. Two sides have been done, two sides are still in the works. There's windows, the clock tower is, the clocks are being rebuilt, so they're they're all glass backlit, so all the glass, some of it had been broken and replaced with wood that was painted. All of that is coming out and being replaced with stained glass back in there. So those are underway. And then there's windows and louvers in the upper and grill. That is all going to be replaced because there's been some water coming in with those louvers, so those will all be fixed. Five will stay active louvers, the rest will become a metal panel to prevent water from getting in. That shows you the two sides that have been done already. You can see how the color really blends much better with the courthouse and the the one side that's being redone actively. And there's one more facade to be done. And then the clock towers, we talked a little bit about, all the glass will come in and it will all be glass. In the picture, the larger picture, some of those are actually painted and wood. The lower picture will bring back the the greenish patina glass that'll have more life to it on the on the clocks. And that shows you again, some of the pieces that are being replaced. On the far left is actually pieces coming out and the glass being cut. There's a great Beauvais in Middletown that is doing a lot of, they did the stained window restoration and the glass restoration. They're a world-class facility here in our community that's really neat. And the the final phase of 3A that's going on is the the metal standing seam roof. If you see a lot of the boxes that are around the courthouse, that's actually standing seam metal panels. It's a weathered steel that looks like copper. We didn't use copper in the last year and a half. Copper has increased significantly in cost, so this is steel that is coated to look like the copper and it has that patina. So that is underway. Here are some pictures of the sides. We don't see it a lot unless you're up on the tower, but it shows you how that copper looking standing seam is going up and that should be done by the end of this year. Two sides are up now. And then the final phase of 3B has gone out to bid and will be started beginning of the year is all the windows. The windows were replaced about 15 years ago or rebuilt with the original wood windows and over time, the sashes are coming apart, the wood has reached the end of its life. So this is gonna historically replace the windows with equal-looking windows, but out of aluminum, that'll go another 50 to 100 years. And that phase you'll see happening in the spring and that'll be the final phase, the complete exterior will be done. And then there's some landscaping and some yard and some lighting that is being talked about as the next phase to finish out the exterior. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
It's a beautiful building and I'm glad we've got such great artists working on it. The one thing that we've talked about, Councilmember Ryan, is just the importance of lighting. That's just gonna add so much to that building when it's when it's viewed at night.
It is. It's it's a, it's kind of like the monument building that it, once it got lit up, it really makes a difference. So lighting this is gonna make it inviting.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor. John, thank you so much for for coming. It's been a pleasure serving the committee with you. I think I've been on there for about a year and a half, maybe close to two years or so. So it's it's a really nice group, made up of some really dedicated residents that wanna, you know, help restore the focal point to the, you know, our downtown and making great progress. Really appreciate the commissioners for for restoring it. It's cost them a couple million, but they're doing the right thing and looking forward to the city contributing to to the lighting as is a final piece to really illuminate the focal point of our downtown. So, John, thank you so much.
Thank you. And kudos to the city, the state and the county for saving it. I mean, a lot of communities move out and let it sit there and we've we've done a great job at keeping it a jewel for the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lauer?
Driving through at night and during the day, I don't think I've ever seen the courthouse look so vibrant as is right now. Can't wait for the finished product, but it looks amazing right now. It really stands out.
Great.
Thank you.
I'll send her a nap.
John, good to see you again after all.
Same here and congratulations.
Been a long time. Thank you.
It has.
Importantly, thanks for your 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 participation in this project. I remember when Judge Rogers talked about the vision that it was going to take and the the assembly of so many talented people, as the mayor said, and artisans and things like that, as Councilman Lauer just said, it's it's drop jaw. It's amazing what what the creation of this new remodeled building will be in the facade and then going back and like you said, new windows, it'll last another 50-ish, 75, 100 years, whatever it may be, but the thoughtfulness that's gone into this project with it being a centerpiece downtown like the Soldiers and Sailors Monument or this building that you had so much to do with. So again, good to see you. Thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Question I have, the the stairs are all gonna be used again as entrance again or?
I don't know that they'll use them as entrance because the challenge to those is handicap.
ADA.
Yeah, ADA accessibility will still have to be, but they're they're structurally sound that they can be used for events, that they're not gonna be closed like they have been because of safety.
Right, okay. I was just wondering if we're gonna use it as entrance and I was gonna ask the second part of it, do we have ADA entrances that's gonna be incorporated, would they do?
Yes.
How we do now?
Yeah, and and they will, the entrance has been moving around because of construction. It'll go back to its permanent home and the ADA entrance will still be on the main level on the lower, it truly isn't the lower level, but the main level on grade and those, they've talked about opening for special events, they're they're structurally capable of opening. I don't know that they're gonna be day-to-day.
But they're big stairs too.
Yeah.
So I got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's beautiful.
Anybody else? Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna add a special moment, a special presentation for, there are fewer and fewer of World War II veterans who are with us today and we recently lost one gentleman named Herman Lawrence and Councilmember Lauer, Councilmember Nav and myself were at his house when he turned 100 years old and he was shot with a tack that that day, just April of 2025. And passed away, he was a lieutenant, United States Navy, worked at P&amp;G. He also, I think, was worked with dairy, dairy industry. The last time I saw him, he was at the Vayner dedication, I think that, I think all of us were at the Vayner dedication. He was riding a sidecar, a motorcycle. He pulled up and he was in his sidecar and he got out of it, he sat down right close to the podium and he was introduced. So since he passed away, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Herman Lawrence. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda, may reserve the right to speak specifically when I'm in the vote on the council floor. Well, individuals who tend to address us have to assign this blue public speaking book that I have up here. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. I'm gonna say a few things before we get started because we have 10 citizens who signed up to talk about data centers, data centers. There is no vote tonight about data centers. I want to make sure that that's clear. There's no vote tonight. There is no agenda item tonight about data centers. However, tonight can be used as a as an opportunity for us to listen to each other, learn more, and we do need to educate each other and ourselves about this topic. Council has received quite a bit of information from citizens and others about data centers. I just want to say one thing that that occurred to me after I started reading some of my own work, some of the resources other people gave to me, that not all data centers are operated and engineered the same way. And that's kind of the key when we take a look at what could happen in the city of Hamilton. So, Mr. Man, I could address just some things briefly right now about how they could learn more before I have each one speak. It might help them know where they could learn more instead of being maybe in this city.
Sure. So we've started a frequently asked questions page. It's an ongoing list of questions that have been asked about data centers and and the answers to those questions. It's on our city Facebook page, it's pinned to the top. It's also on our city website and we have hard copies of those questions and answers that we've compiled so far. So if there's questions asked tonight, we plan to take those questions down and then just append that list of frequently asked questions to answer those.
Can you supply the hard copy of those up there or did you do that or did we?
Yes. They were available at the table for folks that were coming in, so if anybody didn't get one and they and they would like one, we can make sure they get a copy of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nav?
May we have a show of hands of all of you who are here tonight with your concerns about a potential data center in Hamilton? Okay, a lot of you. Thank you for coming and importantly, as the mayor said, there's nothing on our agenda, there's not a vote, there's misinformation that's being put on Facebook that evidently people think that we're going to take an action tonight and there's brick and mortar we're going to take an action tonight, and there's brick and mortar going in tomorrow. That's the furthest thing from the truth. Please know that. And please know what Craig has shared, what we're learning, what we're listening to tonight, and what we'll learn in the future is valuable information, and that you'll all be the first to know should any traction become of this, whether it becomes viable or whether it is not viable for the city of Hamilton, for our city, for your utilities, for what we may have in the future or what we might not have in the future. So please be assured that, yes, there's an awareness, and you're hearing that awareness, but that's all it is right now, is just conversations. There's nothing in ink. There's nothing brick and mortar. There's nothing that's going to be installed, no interruption, nothing at all. So I'm glad you came tonight. I'm glad you listened to your friends that said, please come to city council tonight and, as I shared in our prayer, listen and learn from each other, okay? Thank you.
Okay, it's okay with council. We're going to go ahead and start listening to the citizens, all right? Haley Lawrence. Did I mispronounce your name or hope I didn't? Okay. You want to come, we got to come up to the podium so everybody can hear you better. So when you get to the podium, keep your voice up, and please address it to us up here, city council and the city manager and the law director, if you would please, okay?
Okay.
So your name and your address, and then tell.
Okay, my name is Haley Lawrence. I live at 530 Liberty Avenue, right off of Main Street. I've lived in Hamilton my whole life. I'll be honest with you when I say I was not aware of this meeting until a couple days ago, so I'm definitely not prepared. But all I would like to say is, I'm sure I can speak for everybody here when, we all do understand that there are no plans here yet, but we do all find it very important that we come up here and tell you that we disagree with putting in the data center just due to several environmental concerns. And I know you guys did offer up an FAQ for us. I found it quite vague. I know you guys don't have a lot of information yet, but I don't think we should make any plans to move forward until we have full, concrete information. And not just information from the logistics company, but informations from a third-party company as well. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Haley. Next, we have Jason Kidd.
This is Jay.
I'm sorry, Jay. I changed, I should know that by now.
You should.
All right, Jay. I think you know the procedure here.
Hello, my name is Jay Kidd. I live down here at 222 High Street. I'm sure that most of council knows who I am at this point. I'm the property manager over at Art Space Hamilton, the gallery manager at Strauss Gallery. I formerly served on 17 Strong. I was part of the Keep Hamilton Afloat Initiative, and I'm currently serving as the vice president of We Art Hamilton. But in addition to all of that, I'm actually a small business owner here in Hamilton. And I have a, I have kind of a little thing that I prepared. I'm going to try my best to keep it under five minutes. I'm a small business owner here in Hamilton as the co-owner of Wraith Games. While I am a Hamilton native, my business has been here downtown for the last 20 years. I still live here as well, and so does everyone on the Wraith team who have all asked me to come here and speak with you. One of the biggest reasons that I chose to stay here in Hamilton after I graduated and to make my business here was because of our utilities. We own our own municipal utility company, and it is a rarer and rarer thing these days. It helps keep costs down and stops us from being at the whims of big companies whose interests are outside of our own, taking money out of our town. Not only that, but a large portion, around 60% or so, of our utilities is generated by the Ohio River, real clean power that we can count on. I and my business find cheap, local, clean power very appealing, and I know that fact is also appealing to the folks who want to put in a data center. However, in recent years, our utilities have gone up quite significantly. I hear my neighbors talk about this a lot. It's a big pain point for most of us. When this data center goes in, there's going to be a lot of power needed. A new data center typically requires a minimum draw of 100 megawatts or the equivalent of 400,000 electric vehicles annually, according to Statistica. This project is set to be double that. According to a study issued by Congress, data centers account for 4.4% of the total draw power in the U.S. as of 2023 and are expected to increase to a whopping 12% by 2028. In countries like Ireland, already 22% of the power consumption is now from data centers alone. Globally, the total number of these data centers has jumped from 500,000 in 2012 all the way to a massive 8 million of them today. Power prices are based on demand because there's limited supply of power. We learn about supply and demand in middle school. As demand goes up on limited supply, so do prices. For utilities, that means prices go up for our citizenry. We have some solid data for Ohio already. In 2024, PJM, who transmits power, said that their wholesale jumped up by 22% compared to last year, which is a record high. Now, that may not mean a lot to you, certainly doesn't to me, but by their own statements, this is due to data centers in Ohio, which has caused us to increase by 5% alone in price. This is before we plant one in our backyard. These data centers stopped popping, started popping up everywhere in 2018, not as a response to large-scale tech growth, but to account for the demand in cryptocurrency mining. Yes, like Bitcoin. These are, this is the same well-known scam that likely took some of your nephew's savings. After crypto largely died off, we remember a newer scam that your nephew, brother-in-law, or the most annoying person that you work with got into during the pandemic, NFTs. A huge amount of these data centers were built to account for that, and now we have a new grift. Something that all these have in common is their large amount of power draw and their untold environmental damage. According to the UN, by 2027, we are expected to use 4.2 to 6.2 billion cubic liters of water and currently use 82 terawatt hours of electricity in 2025, which is actually the same as the entire country of Switzerland, just on this AI. These are current numbers. And according to the International Energy Agency, the global power draw is set to increase by 50% by 2028 due to AI alone. Now just imagine what that's going to do to all of our power bills. Speaking of which, towns across the U.S. consistently keep reporting that issues like noise, utility usage, water pollution, tax, traffic increases, and more have caused a reduction in quality of life for people who live near these data centers. Many are rising up, including places, including towns and cities in Missouri, Indiana, Idaho, Georgia, and Texas. But we have an opportunity where we don't have to wait for it to become a huge problem and get out of hand. We can say no now.
Oh, big countdown. Can you wrap up your last?
Well, I think we can probably end it there.
Okay.
I got a zero right there.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Brandy Rogers.
Brandy Wagers?
How about Wagers? You know, I need to get new glasses. Jay became Jason, and Brandy, I do apologize to you.
I apologize, Jay. Forgive me if I throw up all over your podium here. Okay, so my name is Brandy Wagers. I live on Beckett Street, which is extremely close to where this proposed area is, which is literally right behind Foundation Field. I could home run my window. So I can speak through about this light pollution, which everybody seems to be reporting across the United States with these data centers, the noise and the light pollution. Foundation Field, lots of noise pollution during the summer, 11:30, midnight sometimes, right through my bedroom window, that light if it doesn't get turned off, which they have forgotten. I don't sleep very well those nights. So I can only imagine if this data center was to be moved here to Hamilton and have to have these bright fluorescent LED lights, as bright as can be 24 hours a day. So I was also told, you know, if they, if they come and they don't play by the rules, that we could just cut them off. But once they're here, there's no cutting them off. That's not, that's not going to happen. I mean, if they put $1 billion into a building being put here in this, in the city, I would imagine they have some pretty good lawyers. That would literally bury Hamilton. We wouldn't be able to fight that. Once the building is built, that's it. They, they have their, their ground to play on. So also, it was in the question and answers about VORA, which is the data center that is listed here at 103 Knightsbridge. Its capability is 30 megawatts. That's what it's capable of. That's it. The data center that is proposed is 100-plus megawatts, according to the logistics website. So I went and did some math because I didn't know what that meant. I'm like, okay, what's 100-plus megawatts? Well, that's 100,000 kilowatts. So I went and looked at my, my electric bill because I didn't know. I'm like, okay, well, what am I building? I'm building kilowatts. So I consumed last month 2,175 kilowatts. That equals 2.17 megawatts. That's two megawatts for my house. So going back to Jay's point, the supply and the demand, if they are wanting such a high demand, then my, my bills are going to go up. My bill has already went up $200 a month. I never, we've been going without air conditioning trying to save ourselves on the electric bill, even though it's been hot. So if, if this, this company is wanting that amount, then it's going to raise our bills, rather you guys say it's going to or not, rather you realize it, I should say, maybe not, maybe you don't actually fully understand the aspect of that. But also, I would like to know if, you know, if the noise frequency does come from the center, how is this going to affect our school that's there on Riverview? Because our children are already there in LED lighting for seven-plus hours a day, and then if this noise frequency is coming from the data center, won't that penetrate the walls? Isn't that going to affect our children in their everyday learning? I mean, those are questions to think about. And then the last thing that I'm going to say is that, you know, another one of the things on here is that it says that it's going to give us jobs. Jobs for who? Is it gonna, how are we going to assure that it's going to be Hamilton residents that are going to get those jobs? Because that's what one gentleman on Facebook kept saying, oh, it's going to bring jobs to Hamilton. Is it? Is it going to bring jobs? Because I'm pretty sure that some of the construction, the plumbing, and the electric work, which is a temporary job, will probably be outsourced outside of Hamilton. How are we going to assure that this is going to benefit the citizens of our city? Because ultimately, I've lived here all of my life, and I've lived on Beckett for 12-plus years, and that's all my main concern is, is how is it going to affect my quality of life when people across the country are saying that they were promised the same thing, that it's not going to affect their quality of life, but then it did once they moved in? So to Jay's point, we have a unique opportunity here to, as I was told, they're knocking on our door. So don't answer the door.
Is there a Terry Cunningham here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Terry Cunningham, and I live on 2236 Freeman Avenue, one street over from where the proposed data center is going to be. I am a 30-year resident of Lindenwald. I believe that the proposed data center should not be placed in a residential community. It may be the ideal location for Logitech Property Group, but it will be detrimental to our neighborhood. This center is all about money, big money, and it's not money for us. It is money for them. They are destroying neighborhoods and environments to line their pockets. It's all about greed. In every city, town, and state that have allowed data centers to invade, the electric and service charges have went up 24%. This is fact. The electricity rate for industrial is less than our citizen rate. The massive amount of electricity that they use puts a strain on our utilities and raises the fees we pay. Yes, we need technology, but renewable energy does not exist to support their massive usage, but they continue to build mainly to outcompete their competitors. How many megawatts per day in total would this facility use? The city of Hamilton has a potential to increase tax revenue through this project, but residents of Hamilton will not have a property tax decrease. Data centers in general, with the help of legislators, are successfully diverting an ever-increasing amount of their tax burden onto the working class and small business owners through various tax abatement and tax incentives. Companies like Logitech are guarding more and more of their money from being taxed. One example, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation may award data centers exceeding an investment of $750 million a sales and use tax exemption on purchases of qualifying data center equipment and energy for up to half of a century. Additionally, local governments can award a personal property tax exemption on equipment, including servers that store information, software, and even electricity. So the tax revenue amount speculated is often not seen by the community. Hamilton has some of the best water in the state. Why would you choose to jeopardize that? How many gallons of treated water would be used per day? Where is the wastewater that is contaminated and unusable go after cooling the servers? Into our wastewater or sewer or into our river? Will our water pressure drop like it has in other cities after data centers moved in? Will water prices increase like it has in other cities? Almost done. This is a massive data center, 320,000 square foot, two-story monstrosity on 29 acres of land. The 100 jobs that they promise are ridiculous for the amount of space that this will inhabit. A different company of this size could support many more jobs for the residents of Hamilton. This property is owned for industrial, but is, it is also surrounded by community. These data centers should never be considered where there are residential homes. I am outraged that the city of Hamilton would even consider this. Hamilton used to be called the city of trees. That is no longer valid. The city calls this property unused land. This land is being used. It is a green space for trees and wildlife and also cleans our air. All of the wildlife, including coyotes, will soon be in our backyards, just as they are in Fairfield, because they have cut down all their green space. The constant noise from this building due to heat exchangers, air conditioners, and fans, loud, low-level-frequency humming and vibration 24 hours a day, seven days a week from this size facility is another reason to deny this development. I can't imagine how the university students are supposed to study and learn with this noise right next door to them. This noise will also move the wildlife that will exist on what little green space that would remain into the streets of the community. The property has not yet been sold to logistics. If we allow this, year after year, they will continue to build here. Placing this centers, placing these centers in residential neighborhoods needs to stop now on a city, county, and state level. The city and county needs to place its citizens above potential profit. Please realize that Hamilton is a city, but it is also a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, so I have a few questions.
You need your name and your address?
Oh, sorry. Julian Tucker, clear view, please.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a few questions. So I read the fact sheet, and I appreciate you guys giving me the fact sheet because I was like, I'm gonna ask questions. But then I'm like, oh, let me read the fact sheet first. So in comparison to the current data center that's been in Hamilton for 20 years, how is this new proposed data center comparable technology-wise?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have all your questions first?
Okay.
And try and get some some answers.
Okay.
Okay, so your first question was?
Yes, so in comparison to the current data center, because I saw that it was brought up in the paperwork, the fact sheet, that we've had a data center here for 20 years. But I want to know, how is that data center that's been in Hamilton for 20 years comparable technology-wise to the data center that is being proposed to be built here?
Okay, that's question number one. And we may not be able to give you answers or I'll get it to you later, but let's just get your questions out now.
Cool, thank you. Okay, and I would like to know why Amazon chose Hamilton and how was the location chosen? What was the criteria?
Okay.
And then I have another one. Why is it not being placed on the far west side of Hamilton in a lower-populated area?
So, May, can we answer any of those at this point in time? Or would you rather wait for some kind of a report that you can do or update the facts?
I think we provide some very high-level information. But what we're gonna do is take all the questions here tonight and just add those new questions to the frequently asked questions and get you the answers that you're asking or add more information and answers that exist. So the technology question, I'm not sure. Just to be clear, on scale, I think one previous citizen remarked that it was 30 megawatts at the existing data center. That's that's actually not the case. It's two, just two megawatts at the at the current data center at Vora. As far as the location, why Hamilton? I I think what you're seeing in the industry is like, like with other industries, e-commerce, for example, as as the industry grows, proximity matters to the customers. So even though data moves at milliseconds instead of days, like a package you would order online, still getting the those fulfillment centers or the data centers closer to the end users is gonna be the next evolution of this. So as we all consume more and more data, these companies are looking to locate closer to populations that use that data. So that's why I think Hamilton is an attractive investment for folks who want to locate a data center.
Okay. And my next question is, as far as high-paying jobs, what are those, what are the proposed salary ranges for those jobs? And I read that many of those jobs will be local. What do you consider local?
So I don't think they've really said exactly how many jobs are gonna be created. I've seen ranges of jobs, somewhere between 50 and 100 jobs, permanent jobs.
Okay.
There obviously will be hundreds of jobs created temporarily during construction if this project moves forward. But the permanent jobs, like any permanent job, any project, any business here, we don't control where they hire from. But obviously, hiring local is something that that we would highly encourage and we would appreciate. But the the jobs do seem to be pretty high-paying, meaning somewhere in the, you know, $75,000 to $90,000 range. So good-paying jobs, permanent jobs, and more than jobs is the economic impact of this, so the tax impact. The reason, one of the reasons we drive development here locally is to create jobs. Jobs create revenue. Revenue helps pay for all the services that we all use. So paving our roads, paying for public safety, or police or firefighters, things that that cost a lot of money. So this project, beyond just the jobs it would create, would also create general fund revenue to pay for those essential services because they would also be paying a kilowatt tax because we own and operate our own utility, which is unique to Hamilton. If they locate in another community nearby or somewhere else in the county or somewhere else in the state, that's probably not gonna be the case here for us in our community. We have an opportunity to capitalize on this project in a unique way that other communities do not.
Okay. And then I have one last question. And have any of you on the council personally researched the environmental impacts of the proposed data center or any data centers that have been built by AWS in the last three years?
So I can answer that as well. What I can tell you is I've sent a lot of information to council about this, and that's why the direction that that's been given to staff is, you know, to explore this and bring back those answers, right? How will they, what are they gonna propose on how they they cool the the components of this? Is it an open-loop system? Is it a closed-loop system? And there's a lot of technology out there, a lot of different ways to do this. But that's the answers that we're all looking for as this process moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Julian, there's quite a few questions like there. A lot of what-if questions.
Yes.
What-about questions. What-amount questions. I mean, there's gonna be those type of questions until this becomes more of more focused, more focused project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Fantoni? For the remaining four or five folks, if you have questions, let's get all your questions first. Then we'll try and, if not answer, be able to write down what the issues are. So if you've got five questions, let's hear all five questions first. We can all write them down, then go from there.
All right. Mine are scattered, but I can I can I can compile them for an email later, if that's helpful. But all right, I'm Erin Raquel Fantoni. I'm at 741 Sanders Drive. Just wanna say, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to to listen to me. Also, thank you to members of council and to Mayor Moller, who've been in contact with me already about this data center and for producing the FAQ. You know, that really gives me assurance that you, like me, are pro-Hamilton. But from reading the FAQ and the developers' responses to concerns so far, I see a lot of very vague promises of benefit and a lot of assurance about mitigating concerns without really any data to substantiate these claims. And I really think this is because business developers' primary aim is not to be pro-Hamilton. They're a business, they're pro-profit. Now, I'm a capitalist. I am not against profit. But I am against profiting off harm to Hamilton residents, and I have yet to be assured that this can be prevented. After reading the updated Frequently Asked Question page, my concerns about the data center have increased. The Frequently Asked Questions claims that the developers must comply with rigorous city, state, and federal guidelines for environmental impact. In terms of federal, the harms of data centers are well-documented in the press across the country. It's why so many people are here. Federal guidelines have not stopped these harms elsewhere, and I have no confidence that they're going to protect us here. For city and state guidelines, I am less familiar, and I would love to see those explicitly listed on the Frequently Asked Questions page. The page also states that the developers are experts in addressing environmental concerns. I also find this concerning as this means that all the environmental harms by other data centers are by people who are experts at mitigating these concerns, and yet they remain. If these experts cannot prevent the harms, can anyone? Further, the website says that Hamilton has avoided the power increases seen elsewhere in the state by, and I quote, "owning electrical generation resources, participating in strategic projects, and encouraging energy consumption during peak demand." This has also increased my concerns about the data center's power usage. This shows me that we've already had moments of peak demands. We don't have a surplus, or why would we need to conserve? Especially as utilities continues to highlight that a benefit at the data center is to have a large customer for power. If existing customers have to conserve power, there is not enough supply for increased demand to have no impact on price. I realize that the power study might have elements I'm not aware of, and this could change. But I feel this really needs to be explicit on the Frequently Asked Questions page to really detail how increased demand will not increase prices. For as to owning our generation, our electrical generation, this would be great if we had surplus to sell the data center. But according to Hamilton's own power generation output documents online, we don't. If we have the power to generate this project, we wouldn't need to be conserving during peak periods. It also says it's through participating in strategic projects. I don't think this project is strategic to conserve our energy and ensure that our utilities remain strong. For time, I'm gonna skip a bit. I just do not believe with the information as of yet that the benefits outweigh the risks. It says that there was a preliminary review of the benefits. I want to make sure that this contains materials not provided by developers. They are experts and that you catch more flies with honey than with vinegar. They have very expensive lawyers. They have the money to do what they want. I want to make sure that they're paying neutral third parties to evidence their claims. For example, claiming that it will help with long-term investment in Hamilton. I want to see on the Frequently Asked Question page links to other cities of similar size or composition or whatever would be comparable that also had a data center and show how there was long-term impacts. Not a data center promising this will happen. I want another town that's experienced this to go, yes, we were promised this, they built the data center, and it happened. We're happy, it helped us. It also says they will bring jobs. They can't say how many jobs. When logistics spoke to the Cincinnati Business Courier, it even said such discussions would be confidential. I find this very concerning. Several articles in the press have already been incorrect about this data center. I don't think the public is getting good information. And I I just find that concerning that the stuff we're reading, even from established news sources, have been giving incorrect information when quoting developers especially, or at least inciting the developers frequently, which makes me very distrustful of the developers. I'll go, I'll skip to my close. The Frequently Asked Question page says that developers look forward to community outreach. I work at corporate job. I know what corporate jargon it jargon is when I hear it. I don't think they look forward to listening to us. I think they want us to listen to them. I think they want us to listen to their unsubstantiated promises. So I appeal to you to please listen to us and to protect us. Thank you for your time.
I have Katie next, and I can't really read too well the last name, and I'm not gonna mess that one up. Name, please, in your head.
My name is Katie Mothness. The name comes from Guam. It's okay if you can't say it, nobody can. I am from 1030 Foster Avenue, which is in Lindenwald. Lindenwald, I believe the word comes from London Woods, if anybody knew that or not. Somebody mentioned Hamilton being a city of trees. We're a very German community. So I think that's where all that comes from. But anyways, I was born at Fort Hamilton, 1986. I've lived here most of my life. I lived in Tennessee for three years. I joined the military in Tennessee. I came back to Hamilton. I love Hamilton. I miss living here. Then I finished my time with the military at the, if you're familiar with Avron Sims, there's a National Guard with a nice little tank in front of it. That's where I finished the rest of my military career. As I mentioned, I really love living here. I love Hamilton. I want to grow old here. I want to see that this community keeps thriving. I enjoyed seeing all the presentations up here about how we're investing in the government building that I've seen my whole life and how beautiful that is turning out and how much work and dedication is going to that. And I appreciate all that. But I'm struggling to see the pros in this whole idea and how it's gonna affect all of these citizens in a positive way. So I'm not sure who's gonna benefit the most from this project. I'm looking forward to learning more about it. I just learned about this maybe four hours ago. I didn't even know it existed till four hours ago. So I mostly came here just to learn. And I would like to also know if we will get the opportunity to vote as citizens on this proposal or if we will not get that opportunity.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you for being part of the process. Brad Davis?
All right. Good evening, council. How's everyone doing? Oh, somewhere on Wildwood. Tres, ocho uno. That's 381. Ya tu sabe chico. Some of us still speak Spanish, even when white guy comes up and speaks Spanish. That's another story. No, it's it's a little lighthearted, but I I just wanted to give my comments. I'll do a little intro myself. My name is Brad Davis. I'm a tech founder. I've been working in AI for a couple of years. Been doing SaaS B2B software 15. I work for AI Series A startup companies, if you speak that language. I'm a transplant, originally from Mason High School, class of '05. Go Comets! But I've been here four years. And Craig, I've been doing my part by driving up property taxes. So you're you're getting you're getting more money. Bought the house, things are going up. So more on that. So I'm here because I know about AI, I know about tech. I talk to people, I go to conferences. I'm in that space. They generally wouldn't be happy if they knew that I was here. I stand to benefit from the data center being built, the company that I work for, the vendors that I work for. But it is de facto bad for the community, and I'm gonna explain. First off, someone asked, why would they choose Hamilton? Well, the the answer is clear because it's a typical Midwest Rust Belt town that is controlled by a single entity who happens to be the only utility entity throughout the state that controls the utility. That is unique. And if I myself, when I'm having conversations with my stakeholders, that would be exactly who I would wanna talk to as well, as well as the electro, the power, because there's actually rebates and there's all kinds of goodies when you build a data center that comes from clean energy. Scaling AI takes a lot of water. That's why they're looking, and that's why they're here. You happen to be by a river, it's great. Hydroelectric power, even better. I wouldn't say that if you just do a quick chat GPT or do history that the environmental concerns are something that has been, we'll say, a top priority. Sorry not to, for all the environmental people here, but I'm used to talking to CEOs and stakeholders that care about money. And that's that's how businesses are run. And if we had the environmental studies in 1979, when we had all the the pollution, we wouldn't have, you know, that whole thing that happened back then. So, long story short, if you, a great podcast for you guys to listen to, it's called the All-In Podcast. And it has all these tech founders. These are billionaires, people that serve in the White House, the AIs are. And they went on and had Secretary Wright, who's the US Secretary of Energy, come on and say that the the data centers is a national security issue and that they will have their data centers. So they're going throughout the nation, finding where they can find the communities that will take this, and then they will suffer the consequences, just like my street did. But more on that here in a second. Men in suits will show up, and some of them are here today. Not the Brooks Brothers kind, but the Tom Ford kind. They'll show up with suits, and there's always men in suits around. Just ask some of the city council members in Cincinnati. Sometimes it's a stick and sometimes a carrot. So Secretary Wright said, we need to have a lot more power. They're gonna make the national security play. They're gonna make it seem like this is important. And the thing is, it doesn't have to be Hamilton. Because your legacy, similar to, on my street, two years ago, my pipes burst. I showed the city, the guy coming to claim. He told me, hey, these pipes burst in this street, and the city's going around doing it because someone and city council 20 years ago, in the 90s, decided we're going to some, we're going to put in these pipes that are cheaper, and now they exploded. That's what we're doing. My appeal is not to the environmental or things like that. It's to your legacy. You don't want to be in ChatGPT in five and 10 years, and then you have to deal with the fallout that will be this data center. Because at the end of the day, this data center is going to triple prices on average for most citizens. And it's my argument that you don't want to take that short-term benefit for the long-term hit to your legacy. Thank you.
Brandon Thompson?
I'm Brandon Thompson, 3 Beverly Drive. I really came here to really gather information, a little bit about myself. I'm a union electrician, and I've worked on various projects out of Kings Island on a roller coaster. And I've also worked at a data center, building it in the construction phase for Google in Alabama. They built a standalone generating station next to a river, conveniently. And they, so station next to a river, conveniently. And they, so they were able to build a generating station to supply what they need, because it's going to be far more than what's going to go on here. So what are the chances for us to have, like, maybe a contract with them if this does go forward and it is built in Hamilton, that maybe we, any upgrades that we need to our power grid or any of our, to our power plant, that we could maybe pass on, or they could share the cost of those upgrades? That was, that was a question, like, what is?
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to, was that, was that?
That was a question kind of directed.
Up there, because otherwise, we could try and answer something now, possibly.
Yeah, that was, that was a plan, like, what is the chances that we could put something in a contract that if our power plant can't sustain what they need, or it's going to drive the cost up for most of us, for our utility bills or, you know, income tax or property taxes, what are the chances? You got to have something in contract where they would foot the bill, or at least half of the bill?
Yes. And so I'd like to answer that. Mayor, I'm sorry, if we could just go ahead, if you would ask any other questions you have, and then I'll answer that part of that.
Okay. Then the construction part of the project, if we do go forward to that, what are the chances that that could be like a prevailing wage, so at least the people working on it could get a decent amount of wages while they're working there?
Other questions, because I like that you get all the questions out, and then we can address what?
Yeah, that's, those were really the two questions. It's all money-driven.
Address those or wait for the facts? No, I'd like to address those. Is there anybody else on the list?
Yes, we've got one more person after Brandon.
Okay. I think probably, just to keep things concise, I've noted your questions. I'll answer those, and maybe we catch this last speaker and get them all answered at one time. Thank you.
Next to the visual speaker is John, who's on Franklin Street. If he'll come up and give us your name, and maybe want to spell your last name and your address, please.
John Harush. I live on Franklin Street over on the west side.
Okay.
I'm worried about this data center. I don't think we know what it's going to totally entail. I see us having to pay higher rates when we have already been hammered with higher property taxes. A lot of people lost their homes. And from what I understand, property taxes will be going up next year again. I don't think we should be paying these higher rates. I don't think we need this data center. I don't think it does the people of Hamilton any good. It may provide tax revenue for the city, but we're paying for it. And I don't think that's fair. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you, John. Do you want to describe the next steps as far as sharing of information?
Yes. So, one, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. And I know it's not easy to walk up to this podium and speak like that. So thank you to everyone who turned out, asked those questions and brought good information here, and everybody who showed up to support the conversation. What we're going to do is take the questions here, add to our frequently asked questions page. I'm going to try to answer some here tonight. So just some of the common themes, talking about the environment, talking about jobs, talking about taxes and revenue. This last gentleman, or the second-to-last gentleman was talking about, you know, what we could build into a contract, what we can make sure we agree to on the front end. One thing I want to make clear is, from the outset of the conversations, when we were approached about this project, we made clear to the developer that they had to pay their own way. And what that meant was that they had to pay the cost for any study for this project. They had to pay the cost for any infrastructure to deliver the power for the project. And they would have to pay the cost of the actual power used by the project. That was done intentionally, because we wanted to ensure that our local customers are not, their rates are not supporting this project. The project pays its own way. Somebody made the analogy about, you know, don't answer the door, you know, they came knocking on the door and use that analogy. I actually liked that analogy. And so I think if somebody were to come and knock on any of our doors, you know, the one thing you wouldn't do is just open the door and let anybody walk in, not knowing who they were, what their intentions were. That just would not be wise. And in this case, a developer, no matter what project they're pursuing, to knock on the city's door, for us to open the door and let them walk through, open the door for them without any questions would be unwise. But I think it's equally unwise to not answer that door, to at least not have that conversation, to understand what are their intentions, who are they, what will they do, what are those implications? Can we draft an agreement that ensures that, you know, there are jobs and there is revenue, and there are not the environmental issues that we're all concerned about? If we can, maybe it's worth pursuing the project. If we can't, then we can part ways at that point. But we don't let them in without that conversation, and we don't not answer the door as well. As far as, the last point was about property tax and revenue, yes, all of us pay taxes, and those taxes go to services for all of us. We have to have taxes in order to cover those essential services for all of us. But if we don't have revenue, either through jobs or through tax revenue, like kilowatt taxes on a project like this, then it is property taxes, and it is levies that have to be utilized in order to pay for those essential services. If we want our roads paved and we want those, you know, the roads improved, and we want those in good order, and we want our infrastructure in order, we have to find ways to pay for that. And so that's part of having this conversation, to see if this is a project that the city is willing to pursue or not. Other than that, Mayor, we'll take the questions, the other questions that we're asking, we'll update our frequently asked questions page, and we'll continue to engage in these conversations as we move forward. And as we know more, I know some of those answers, that was pointed out, that they were kind of vague, but it's the best information we have right now. As we have more conversations, we'll know more, and we'll update that information.
City manager, if they wanted to contact us, is there a focal point email address or?
There is. Thank you. So the frequently asked questions page, now on our city website, now pinned to the top of our Facebook page, also contains an email address. So folks that are at home tonight, tomorrow, anybody here in the audience that didn't get a chance to come up here to the podium, if you have a question, you can submit it to that email address, and we'll add that to the sheet. We'll answer your question. That email address is?
On the third page? Is that correct?
It is. It's at the bottom of the frequently asked question page. It is medirequests@hamilton-oh.gov. Medirequests@hamilton-oh.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, sir, I don't know how to do this, but come on up if you have something else you just want to ask. And we're not going, we got to get the rest of the meeting get to.
I just wondered if we could do this again. And I mean, this is important.
I believe this will happen again, sir. I mean, I think in the exchange of information, as we learn more, as you learn more, as we share, this is a good way to do it. But you can also do some of it online, where you read the facts, submit something to that email address. But I believe we'll all be here again. Matter of fact, I know we'll be back here again.
I'd appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being part of the process. I mean, that's what this is, that's what this is, how we reach decisions, how we reach solutions. Okay, that takes care of audience and citizens. We now have to go to the rest of our agenda. We go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, all caucus reports, and meeting minutes. The first going to the committee of the whole. That's an opportunity for council to hear from our city professionals, ask questions, provide direction, comment on reports. And we'll start that soon as we get it a little bit further through folks' sleep. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the facts and updating these. I think it's a great way to communicate and educate. Thank you. Okay. Okay. I'll accept the motion. The regular meeting will be recessed. Committee of the whole take place. Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, Senate Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, both same sign. Very none. That motion is carried at 7:45. So we'll go into the caucus agenda. Mr. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first presentation for caucus agenda item number one will be made by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Mayors, city council, I appreciate this opportunity. The Tax and Senate Review Council, as it's referred to as TRC, met on September 23rd, 2025, to review the exemptions from property tax taxation, the various agreements that we have for the city. As a result of the review of all the agreements, TRC recommends that all enterprise zone agreements, community reinvestment area agreements, and also the tax increment financing agreements be continued with no modification. Is the recommendation of this office that council received the report, concur with its recommendations and direct preparation of the necessary legislation.
Any questions for Jody? I just want to say thank you, Jody, for putting all those attachments in, so that we know which properties or which businesses are going through those property taxes. Thank you.
Next up for agenda item number two will be a presentation by our Health Director, Ms. Cindy Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening to recommend authorization of grant forms from the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. This is a grant through the Ohio Department of Health Bureau of Health Preparedness. It is a grant that is available to county health departments, but includes city health departments as well. This agreement with the Butler County General Health District will provide minimal funding of approximately $22,000, with an expected additional funding amount to be named later. This will provide support for staff salaries, training, and supplies for emergency response efforts. It is a deliverable grant, and it runs from July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2026. Please consider this recommendation. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Next up for agenda item number three will be a presentation by our Executive Director of Infrastructure, Mr. Edwin Porter.
Evening, Mayor Mueller, members of council, Hamilton community. I'm here today to give a presentation on the Municipal Gas Acquisition and Supply Corporation, commonly referred to as MUNIGAS, supply, contract addendum, and participant addendum. Same word?
It does.
Okay. So the City Hamilton Department of Infrastructure is seeking to authorize a supplier addendum and a participant addendum to continue its participation in a natural gas supply discounting program. So the city has been a part of a joint natural gas purchase contract with MUNIGAS since April of 2020, or 2007. This program provides a discounted rate on natural gas by leveraging the collective purchasing power of multiple municipalities. So the current discount is 30 cents per decatherm on all purchased natural gas volumes. And in 2024 alone, this program saved the city over $700,000 in gas supply expenses. So the existing agreement with MUNIGAS is set to last until December 31 of 2032, and these are addenda to that existing contract. So the question is, why do we need an addenda? Well, we're transitioning to a new gas supplier. So our existing gas supply contract with Constellation Energy Marketing expires on October 31st of this year. So in June of this year, the city issued a request for proposals for a new gas supplier. So we've reviewed the proposals, and we've selected Symmetry Energy Solutions as the new supplier. And the new agreement will go into effect on November 1, 2025. So to continue participating in the MUNIGAS discounting program, the city must execute a supplier addendum to reflect the changes from the previous supplier, which was Constellation Energy Marketing to Symmetry Energy Solutions. So the city must also execute a participant addendum. So just a high-level overview of the supplier addendum. So it modifies the gas supply contract between the City Hamilton, which is the buyer, Symmetry, which is the supplier, and it introduces a dealer, which is BP Energy Company, and as an additional party. So the arrangement facilitates the City Hamilton participation in this discount program. In the participant addendum, it's an addendum to the gas exchange agreement, and that's between MUNIGAS and BP Energy Company. So this addendum designates the City Hamilton as a participant effective November 1, 25. And it lists four city, the, four of the city's natural gas suppliers and their corresponding contact information. Okay, so the staff recommendation is that the city council receive this report and authorize the preparation of the necessary legislation to execute the supplier addendum and the participant addendum. And this action will allow the city to continue receiving the benefits of the MUNIGAS discount program, which has proven to be a significant cost-saving measure. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, Edwin, thank you. Thank you for going through the opportunity to do the RFP. How many other, I'll call them dealers, because of the way you explained, how many other dealers might have bid on this?
We had two suppliers submit proposals in the RFP process.
Okay. Are they national in scope?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I assumed that they were rather than regional or, you know, zone and things like that.
That's right, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Good information, Edwin. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being involved in that discount program. I mean, that's $700,000.
Next up for agenda item number four, there'll be a presentation from a member of our Finance Department, Ms. Tamika Hedgerton.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, city council members. I am presenting on the Accepting, Appropriating, and Budgeting of Fiscal Year 25-26 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds. HUD recently approved our plan that went before council this past spring. They approved our plan September 12th. And we were able to fortunately get our agreements in prior to the shutdown, which was nice. You will see that everything that was proposed is consistent with what was presented to council back in the spring. So funds are being committed towards public services, a number of our public service providers, economic development, street resurfacing and improvements, as well as public facility improvements. As it relates to home funds, we are committing funds to a revitalization project, as well as CHODO funds, and also our match funds are being committed towards another, the same, the expansion of said revitalization project. Any questions? I'm here presenting tonight just asking that council approve, appropriate, and budget the funds that have been approved by HUD.
Questions? Thank you.
And lastly, for items five and six, will be a presentation by our Planning Director, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Very bad timing.
So sorry.
Okay, that was very bad timing. I apologize. These are very quick, so it's okay. Good evening. So this is relative to two street vacations, and I'm just going to hold this here, so I'm sorry. Thanks, Daniel. So both of these have actually been before council previously. This is the vacation of Williams Avenue for the Schuler-Bennyhoffen project. So this was before you, just about a month ago, as a petition to go back to planning commission, they've now recommended approval of this street vacation of Williams Avenue for Schuler-Bennyhoffen. And if you want to click to the next slide, again, that was just showing the entire project there, which extends, you know, across what is currently Williams Avenue. And the next project is related to the Durana Hybrid Campus Expansion. All of these vacations are internal to the campus. So Bell Avenue Alley, Dixie Highway Avenue, or I'm sorry, Dixie Highway Alley, and then Skilman Avenue and Fox Avenue. If you click to the next slide, Daniel, again, you'll see that all of these streets and alleys are internal to what will be the Durana Campus, campus after the expansion. That has now gone before planning commission, and they recommend approval. Thanks. And appreciate, no questions, so I can say. And appreciate, no questions, so I can sit.
That concludes our presentations.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion. The committee of the whole be closed. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none. None. The motion is carried at 7:55. I'll accept the motion. The regular meeting will reconvene?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Adopted at 7:55 as well. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that, with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda.
Excuse me. Concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none. The motion is carried at 7:56. Now go to the public hearing. I'll accept the motion. The regular meeting will be recessed. Public hearing take place?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none. We're going to the regular, excuse me, we're going to the public hearing at 7:56. Mr. City Clerk?
A public hearing regarding rezoning specific properties of Fort Hamilton Hospital to BPD Business Plan Development.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the rezoning of specific properties of the Fort Hamilton Hospital to Business Plan Development? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the rezoning of properties of the Fort Hamilton Hospital? Anyone on council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab?
Will the public hearing be closed?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. Okay. I'll accept the motion. The regular meeting will reconvene?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Regular meeting will reconvene at 7:57. I'll accept the motion regarding council actions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab?
That no be made upon the minutes, and each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 7:57. Going to pending legislation, agenda item number eight, second reading of an ordinance involving a policy for sponsorships.
An ordinance approving and adopting a policy for the City of Hamilton, Ohio's solicitation, acceptance, and recognition of sponsorships for public use. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer?
Might make a motion that the ordinance be adopted?
Second. By Councilmember Lauer, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0.
New legislation, agenda item number nine, first reading of an ordinance involving that rezoning of Fort Hamilton Hospital properties to Business Plan Development.
An ordinance approving the rezoning of specific properties of Fort Hamilton Hospital to BPD Business Plan Development. Mick McComer, Kettering Health, Fort Hamilton Hospital applicant, first reading.
Okay. Audience and city manager? Nothing to see here, Mr. Mayor. The audience and city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer?
I'd like to, there's a couple of things I'd like to talk on. First of all, I'd like to thank Tim and your reward tonight. Thank you for all your service. You, I love the fact that you still have a fighting spirit, and I admire that, and I hope, as I grow older, that I still have that fighting spirit that you have.
Thanks, Joel.
The other thing, I want to thank our citizens for voicing their concerns, that we had an amazing turnout, and I think it's important that we hear everybody's opinions. The other thing, I'm going to brag a little bit this week, and we, at Baden High School football, we had an amazing week, an amazing game, and I've never been a part of something so, so great on the football field. It was, we beat Fenwick, and we scored 41 points, and total time of possession in that half was 2 minutes and 57 seconds. And I just want to shout out to Coach Yordi, and what an amazing job he has done in putting this team together. So, something to watch. Very exciting. Wow. That's impressive.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
This past Sunday, the department of neighborhood had their first level block celebration out in, at the Victory Apartments on Main Street, and we had about 30 people that came to work at 8 o'clock in the morning, were done by 11 o'clock that morning with painting and cleaning out debris and shrubs, and re-beautifying those apartments and things like that. It's really a nice countryway now along Main Street, or, I'm sorry, in the Main Street area, out in that Frishes, former Marshes Market, and things like that. So, just a nice compliment to the city. We have another one coming up this coming Sunday from 8 until noon on Ludlow Street, and then there is a third one, and I don't remember the location. Three consecutive Sundays also from 8 until noon. Susan, do you recall?
I don't off the top of my head.
I'm sorry, don't either. So moved.
North 7th.
Thank you. North 7th Street. So, anyway, great stuff from the city, and what we're doing with the, of your block grid.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Well, everybody probably notices I wear a lot of pink lately, but it's, I wanted to remind everybody that October is the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's a, my wife earlier this year was diagnosed with breast cancer, and she, she's given a pretty good fight, and she decided that she wanted, instead of hiding it, she wanted people to know about it and advocate for, you know, awareness of it and what you should do. And she actually gave me a couple of facts, and what, and she, being a nurse, she wants everybody to take care of herself. She wants people to make sure that the, you get out there and do the things you're supposed to do. First of all, one fact is that one in eight women that you know in your, in your circle is going to have breast cancer. And actually, that is going a little bit the wrong way. It's, our oncologist told her it's one in five. It's increasingly common in women under 50, and one in two women, which is unbelievable, do not screen. And the thing that's really important about that, that if you screen and you catch it early, as my wife, I believe, has done, it's 99% survival rate. And something a lot of people don't know, too, that 2,800 men will get breast cancer this year, too. It's, you know, it's a terrible disease. It's a, it's a thing that can be stopped by regular screenings. She always says, make sure you get your, get your early screening. She did it every year, and unfortunately, she found something this year. There's other, there's foundations out there that are doing great work for people. I think everybody knows somebody that has been affected by this, but one foundation I want to really recognize is Karen Wellington Foundation, that does a lot of, they do make a wish for a lot of women. I've played in their golf outing for 10 years, not over knowing that, you know, my wife actually was a recipient this year of one of their awards, and, you know, playing, I've been in that, supporting that outing for a long time, and just hoping, you know, never just thought it, let's just put it that way. So, I guess best thing is, is October, make sure you wear your pink, make sure you, you know, get out there and do the things that you're supposed to do, that your doctor tells you. You know, do the screenings. They're very important, and it can, it can be, it can be beaten. So, just, I'll be wearing the same tie next meeting, too. So, just want to make sure everybody's wearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Pullman. Anyone else? I want to give a few dates of interest, maybe interest to you. October 18th is the Joe Nuxhall Historical Marker Dedication at LJ Smith Park, at the Nuxhall Ball Field. That's at 12 o'clock on that Saturday, October the 18th. A wiffleball game will be breaking out after that, possibly a softball game. A couple of council members could show up and swing a wiffleball bat. I think we could be part of that. So, after that wiffleball game, there's going to be trunk or treat there at the park, and it's being put together by a group of parents in North End Park, North End area. So, it's definitely an event being grown by residents of North End. Number eight, 2025, at 12 noon, dedication of the flag and plaque in memory of Staff Sergeant Fred Brown in Bailey Square, that Councilmember Lauer and myself have been working on with a lot of other city folks and American Legion. So, two dates you may want to keep in mind if you're interested in going to either one of those. Anyone else on council have anything that they want to say at this time? Executive session tonight, the city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, motion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Okay. Is there a motion that council go to executive session? And that stated purpose given by the city manager?
So, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. A roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
If we go to executive session at 8:06, we'll come out of executive session, just to reopen and then close. Public meeting. Thank you.
Where you said September?